Share the next grand list with the primary building permits, other activities. So like I said, the report speaks for itself and I welcome any questions.
No further, thank you for having me.
No questions?
Good start.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see.
Startees.
Alphabetically, who comes?
Not me. I'm last.
We're still our track.
Good morning. I have nothing new to add to the report, so I'll take any questions.
Can I ask a quick question? When you have these community trainings, how many do you see that coming? And you either some I see where there's four or six, and then there's some that are 24 or 20. Is there anything that we can do to help kind of advertise these if you're looking for some more community engagement?
We always are looking for more community engagement, so it depends on the type of class. Sometimes organizations will reach out, you know, one of the local yacht clubs say, you know, I have four junior lifeguards we want to train, so that's why we'll go in and train those four.
Got it.
When we open up to more community-wide public classes, you know, we'll put the word out, and we tend to see the larger numbers with that, but the more people we can certainly train in CPR, the better, so absolutely, we'll share the word and get it out.
Great, and I'm sure these are on your social media?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, we can start sharing those, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark, you and I both just learned alphabet. You should have been next.
Morning, everyone. I have nothing further to add, except the state DOT is updating the diversionary route plan for Fairfield County, and they would like to meet with us next month sometime, so we're looking for people that have interest and would like to participate in that process. It hasn't been updated since the 90s. Not that much has changed in Fairfield County.
Could you say what the?
Yeah, yeah.
So when 95 gets clogged up due to an accident or other problem, they've set up routes that are alternate, Post Road being one of them. Our town has the luxury of having a railroad bridge that prohibits truck traffic, so we end up using West Avenue as well, and that's the route that the state, if you will, puts signage out and all that to direct the 95 travelers. If you've ever gone through it, there's no movement at all, so it really is a nightmare.
So how many people are you looking for?
Well, I mean, if you have expertise in it, I think someone probably should participate in the first meeting from the board, perhaps? I think it challenges every town in our region when this happens. Thankfully, it doesn't happen on a regular basis, but it puts the town to a standstill.
And I find when there's an accident or something, you find those that are using Google Maps or Waze suddenly are flooding the side.
That is a bigger problem these days, and I don't know if that's being addressed in the plan. Obviously, it's old enough that it probably predates Waze and all that.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see how that pans out, because a lot of the trucks that hit the bridges are also using GPS and not paying attention. Any questions?
Thank you. Ken? Perhaps for the people watching, if you could come up and just identify yourself in your top title.
Good morning, I'm Jennifer Charneski, the Finance Director, and the only addition that I have to the report is just an update on the purchase of Great Island. The Board of Finance met Tuesday, July 19th, and they had a discussion about how they wanted to structure the upcoming issue, and they've decided that they would like to issue somewhere between 50 to 75% of the purchase price as bonds and take advantage of the reduction in rates that they were starting to see in the market, rather than doing notes as we had originally discussed. But in terms of the sale, we'll notice the issue of sale after, or notice the sale after the due diligence period is done, so if for some reason that's extended, we would hold off, and if we go probably beyond a month from where we expect it to be, we'd bring it back to the Board of Finance to revisit how they want to structure that sale. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any issues with any of the software, if you need to upgrade?
No, I think it's worked really well. We found a couple of little kinks that we couldn't have identified during testing, so we're working through those, but overall, I think it's an improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Bob, Fire Marshal.
Morning, Bob Bush, Fire Marshal. I have nothing to add to my report. Couple of updates, we did do interviews for the new full-time Deputy Fire Marshal position and made an offer to an individual who has accepted the offer.
That's great.
Yeah.
Could be starting in September. And then we are recruiting for a vacant partner.
How are you doing with all the inspections with all the new projects that are going in?
We're doing okay.
Managing.
We're managing, it's challenging.
Yeah.
It's just, the construction industry isn't what it was 20 something years ago. The pride isn't what it used to be, and so it's a lot of repeat inspections of, you know, they think like getting 70% of the work done is passive, so. No, you need 100, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you feel that you'll have them fully inspected and that they will be satisfied or requirements by their anticipated open dates?
Ox Ridge School, yes. The Heights Federal Realty Project, they've already passed their original target date of July 11th, but they're looking to occupy apartments mid-September, and they should be okay with that, and then the retail tenants are, will just be a space-by-space fit out, so.
Okay, well hopefully this new hire can help.
Yeah.
That burden.
Absolutely.
Are you ready to say who it is?
He has not been able to give notice to his current employer, so.
Right.
He's been collecting vacations.
Got it. Good, well, good luck, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
David, Health?
Good morning, Dave Knopf, Director of Health. I'd like to start off by saying a little bit of good news, anyway. In the report, I noted that the entire state of Connecticut was put under a drought alert.
Yeah.
That's been removed for Fairfield County. So what that means is that the two-inch rain we had last week filled up our reservoirs, but it doesn't mean that people who are on wells can just irrigate to their heart's content, so summertime, groundwater levels decline, so be careful if you're on a well and you irrigate, otherwise, we're not in a drought condition officially. The other thing is, is that the state has, Department of Agriculture is the overseeing agency that has to do with shellfishing in the state, and we issue recreational shellfishing permits, people go out and plumbing, and they've, the state has reclassified some of the shellfishing areas in town and have actually reduced the amount of area that's open to recreational shellfishing. We have notified all permit holders to that effect, that the shellfishing areas have been changed, so we'll do what we can to continue getting the message out, perhaps work with the Marine Patrol to help let people know out there that they should or shouldn't be in certain areas shellfishing. And finally, the other item of note is, yesterday I got the call from the State Health Department. As we expect every year, we do get positive West Nile virus mosquitoes found in town, and yesterday was the notice. We have two testing stations, the state tests routinely, and yesterday was our first positive pool of mosquitoes. No positive cases in humans as yet, but yesterday was our, our date.
Are there other towns in the region that are testing positive too?
Pardon me?
Are there other towns, like obviously you've got Darien's, but it's.
Yeah, ultimately, the entire.
It's pretty common.
Entire coastline does, this is not unusual, it's every year. The thing we watch for is human cases, and we haven't had any reported human cases in Darien since I've been here, so.
Question for you, on the COVID testing stations at St. John's and where I was, I was driving through the other day, I, you know, I don't see cars that are going through. Are we paying for these testing sites?
Nope.
No.
Doesn't cost anything, and I'm surprised they're still there.
I'm surprised they're still there.
Because the, I get reports daily, and the Leroy station maybe sometimes has as few as two.
A day.
You know, a day.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's really not being used that regularly. The church maybe is low as 10 a day.
But.
So I have not heard any discussion, and I do reach out to them to ensure, to remind them that if they're going to change, please let us know in advance, but as of right now, they're still, they're still open.
They're still there?
With regard to the drought condition change, does that change any of the mandates regarding sprinkler operations?
No, that's, that's an ongoing thing that Aquarion has adopted, and they've promoted it statewide, you know, so that is not going to change. It just has to do with an awareness, and there's a series of triggers that would result in more and more conservation from voluntary to steps of required. So we're removed from the warning, but I still want to stress how important it is for people on wells not to, you know, run those sprinklers every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources?
Susan Parkstair, Human Resources Director. I have nothing to add to my report. I'm sorry, I didn't have a report for you guys this quarter, obviously, so I've been here a full three weeks now, and I spent most of the time meeting with the different department heads and trying to figure out how HR can help them in their quests. We've done some interviewing. The dispatchers was probably the biggest one, I'm sure Don will probably talk about that, but we're looking for a few dispatchers, so we did a couple of days of interviewing there. We've got some other part-time jobs up on the website that we're recruiting for as well. That's really all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you.
You finding your way around already? I'm getting there, yeah, I'm getting there, yes, it's been, it's been fun. Everybody here has been really great, and I'm recognizing the faces and the names, and I'm, I'm making my way, yeah. Welcome onboard, thank you very much.
Ally, Human Services.
Good morning, Ally Ramstek, Human Services Director. I don't have much more to add, as you can see, we've been, had quite a quarter. Any questions that you have?
Thank you for all that you've done.
You're welcome. Takes a village. It's not just me.
It's been a long few months.
It's been a long few months.
Do you have any more trainings coming up?
I'm getting trained in August, and then we will start more in September, yeah.
They're fantastic, thank you for doing them.
Aren't they good, yeah, you participated.
They're fantastic, thank you.
So, and we're hoping that maybe we'll bring it to the department heads and staff, and we'll continue to offer it. Paula Sutcliffe is also interested from the Health Department in getting trained, so there'll be two of us, so economically, it made more sense than to keep paying somebody to come and do it, although Don Roy's been amazing, so yeah, we will definitely continue as there's an interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ally, are you finding that there's more people in need of services this quarter with inflation going up and?
Not so much yet, just in the last couple of weeks, we've had quite a few people call about their electric bills, because they've skyrocketed, so not, nothing drastic yet, but I anticipate, you know.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been helpful to have that ARPA money, so we have helped quite a few people with their rent, with back rent, so we've, I forget, I think I put the number near how much we spent, but well over $10,000 so far, just helping with back rent.
I imagine that shakeouts coming down the pipeline?
Yeah, we did have an eviction last, over, a little over a week ago, the rent hadn't been paid in a year, so that was beyond our scope of ability to help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
IT, George?
Hey, guys. Good morning, I'm George, I'm with IT, Computer People, at Town Hall. Nothing further to add, so if you have any questions, I'll take.
Well, we've had some occasional, I guess, junk emails or phishing emails, have you been? Spoofing, I think.
Yeah.
Spoofing. As you can see, I should be heading the technology.
It's an art today.
Keep your day job, yeah.
It's an art today.
Is everyone in town getting them, or is it just?
Everybody gets them, and every time we get any, I've always alerted the guys back at the office, and we do, we block the actual sender. It's the most we can do, because it's always changing, I think a lot of times, it's always generating, you know, random emails and so on, so just once you get to click on a link, that's the issue, or run an executable.
So George, people should look at the sender address?
Correct.
They should, you know, hi, you know, hover over the link, if there's a link to click, hover over that, make sure that that is legit, and the telephone is a good weapon. If you get an email from somebody that looks kind of funky, pick up a phone call.
They push it to me, actually, they send it to me, and then I just let them know, I return it back and say, hey, okay, here's the email, and you can see the actual sender. So it's good that they always alert me, and then I always just try and block them.
Maybe we should communicate that to everyone who's got a Darien address, that's the process, right?
Yeah, we should.
Okay, yeah, I'll put that in, I'll drop a note to everybody.
Send a joint email out to everybody, just letting them know this is the process.
Just to look at emails.
I mean, is it, is it necessary for them to send it to you?
No, 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 I mean, some just send it to me anyway. I'll alert them and just say, just drop me a note if you want me to try and block it. It's difficult, because a lot of times it changes.
Sure.
Those emails change all the time.
They do change, and I find unfortunately, the first look is the one who's being targeted the most.
Oh, she gets tons, I know she does.
And unfortunately, it's been going on for some time.
It'll go on forever.
So if anybody gets an email from the first look and saying that they need help and please click on this link, please do not click on the link.
Yeah.
Please forward it.
So maybe what we should do is more pushing out what to do if you get an email that looks a little suspicious.
Yeah, we'll put, we'll put something together and send it to everybody.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
You got it, guys.
Jeremy?
Good morning, Jeremy Ginsburg, Director of Land Use. The big news from my quarterly report is the public hearing tonight on the town's affordable housing plan. Planning and zoning commission will be here, meeting starts at 7:30, room 206. For those who want to submit comments, tonight is the night, and presumably, the hearing will close, and the commission will make a decision on the plan, and if it gets adopted, they'll forward it on to the Office of Policy and Management. Nothing further to add beyond that, I do echo what Bob Bush said, is the Building Department is similar to the Fire Marshal, inspecting Ox Ridge and Federal Realty in the Corbin District, almost on a daily basis, to keep on top of those projects, get them moving along.
Any questions? We appreciate you came to our last meeting, you gave us a pretty thorough update on the other projects, so we appreciate that.
Look forward to doing it again in a few months.
Excellent. Pam Gary?
Good morning, Pam Gary, Director of Parking and Recreation. I don't have anything to add to my report, other than we do have a townwide survey that just got distributed for Pear Tree Park, to see what type of improvements that the residents would like to see. It's open until August 5th, and also wanted to just say we had a successful fireworks event on July 15th. I want to thank, much thanks to Bob and Don and the Emergency Management and our staff, because we couldn't do it without them, but it was phenomenal.
There's great response from the public on how good the fireworks were this year, although it was later, people were like, actually, it was kind of nice.
It actually wasn't later, I got that message so many times.
Oh, yeah?
Last year was July 22nd.
Oh.
And I heard that so many times, and people would say the same thing, and then, and then I'd tell them it was the same weekend last year, and people were like, wow, okay, they liked it because it wasn't so busy.
Yeah.
The week of July 4th, so I think that, we put a survey out yesterday for the fireworks event to see whether that date would, is, you know, if the people are happy with that, so we'll see how that comes back to.
So how do you access this survey?
Well, we do have, we have QR codes around town, too.
Okay.
But we also sent out a link that will take you directly to the survey, that was emailed through our system in Park and Rec. We also hired Noble House, who's a company in town that also distributed it through email.
It's on social media.
Social media, so we've done a pretty vast effort.
Are we getting responses back?
Noble House will be taking all the responses and then kind of manage that process, so it'll be very interesting, see what comes back.
Good.
I've had a couple of residents approach me and ask me if the commission is considering any kind of resident pass systems for the cherry lawn pickleball courts. Is that anything that's on the commission's radar screen, and I'm not saying it should be or advocating for that, I just be getting questions about that.
We've been getting a lot of questions, too. We have not come to any conclusions, nor has it hit the commission's agenda yet, but it is something that we've been trying to work through in our office first, to see whether or not that system can work. We do have a system in place similar with paddle courts, but we have staff working there. So that's what we're trying to work through in our office, how we can absolutely do something seamless like that without any staff on hand at the site. So we're looking at different alternative methods that other towns use. It's going to, it'll be a process, but we're, we're certainly not turning our heads, so we're looking internally how we can make the process better, that everyone will be happy, because it's a public court, so, right, so we can't, as much scheduled use of the pickleball court, we have upsets some of the people because they can't get in, there's lessons, there's, you know, scheduled use, and then there's the public that just show up to use the court. We only have four pickleball courts, so I think behind the scene, we're also saying, where else could we possibly have more? So that might also be an alternative down the road. We're certainly trying to digest it and come up with a solution.
Thank you.
I see that the beach permit sales have gone up every year, which is fantastic. I know in particular, this summer of 2020, the cars were end-to-end in the parking lots. How are they doing now, is it less populated during the day?
It's, you know, our numbers started off pretty consistent.
Okay.
Till last year, which was interesting, and maybe even a little bit more at the gate than last year, but weather was also better.
Okay, so daily, you mean daily passes at the gate?
Daily passes.
Okay.
And also in those numbers, the daily passes, when we see a big surge there, daily passes weren't in that, in those numbers, and then finally, we decided that's where they should be, so that's a little bit of that increase there as well. But I would say that the, Weed Beach has been pretty steady, Pear Tree's been quite, very quiet, so I'm not certain about that, because weather's been very good.
Well, but the water's been closed a few times.
It has been hot.
It's been so hot.
Nobody wants to go to the beach. But yeah, Weed is doing well, so it's, it's very interesting, but it's been oddly slow.
Well, and I'm wondering, because we've had several days where the water's been closed over at Pear Tree.
But at Weed, at Weed, too, so it's.
But, okay, so if the water in the beach is closed at Pear Tree, does that mean it's always closed at Weed?
It's just because of the rainfall.
Right.
Right, yeah, so that's consistent. So we'll shake up the numbers at the end and see where we fall, but it has seemingly been very slow at Pear versus Weed Beach, but there's a lot more activity at Weed.
Yeah.
You have the playgrounds, and you have the tennis courts, and the paddle, and kayaking, and so, you know, it is, it is a different, it's a different beach, different feel.
I also see that the summer programs, the participation is down a little bit lower than it was last year. Are you finding that they're full, like at least occupied enough to keep the programs going, or are you having to not host things, or they're very minimum?
No, I think that they're full, and they're doing well, I just think 20 and 21 were very unusual, but our numbers have still been increasing, they're increased from 2019 still, we haven't gone below that, it's just that they're kind of hovering just below 2021, which is, was a very busy, and people are traveling now, so I think that has a lot to do with it as well, but we're, we're staying very busy, programs are filling.
Staffing issues are okay?
Okay, yep, we are filling, we do have an opening at our permanent part-time front desk in the office right now. I don't know that we have any applicants right now, we had it open until August 5th, so that is one big opening that we're trying to fill.
It's year-round position?
Year-round, permanent part-time, and our program supervisors filled, Cassie started on June 13th and hit the ground running. She did a phenomenal job, as well as all the staff, to pull off the fireworks event. You know, she, she's out right now for, for a week on medical, but she's, she's fantastic, she's doing really well, yeah.
Thank you.
All good, thank you.
Don, Police Department?
Good morning, folks. Don Anderson, your Chief of Police, I hope you found the quarterly report comprehensive once again, all thanks to that goes to my staff, if there's any issues, it's on me, but if it's all good, it's on my staff, I appreciate that. As the selectmen know, Captain Mariner's away at the FBI National Academy, so Captain Hadema and I are picking up the slack for that division, so far, so good. Technically, on paper, we're at full strength, and I believe that has been the first time in my tenure that we are on paper, at least at full strength. We still need four civilian dispatchers, but that is in the queue list, it's in the background phase now. We do have two officers, one on long-term injury, another one about to go on on fairly long-term injury, but we're, we're doing pretty well, all in all, staffing-wise. I just want to give a shout out to our two, two of our newest officers, Frank Spalding and Brady McGee. In baseball parlance, we stole them at the trading deadline without having to give up any future draft picks. They came to us from Burlington, Vermont, and thus far, they are a good fit, they are veteran, dedicated officers, so very, very thankful that we are now getting officers that we can slot right in very quickly to get him on the road, so. Also attending graduation for one of our newest officers, graduating from the Poste Academy on Friday, so he'll be coming back and starting his 10-week FTO period. With that, I'll take any questions.
Well, too, those ongoing issues are unfortunate, the unlocked car.
Yeah, we had a little bit of a dip in frequency. Over the weekend, we had, I believe we had six or seven, again, with 100% consistency, the cars were unlocked, they were in every section of Darien, and I think I've informed the selectmen, and I'm sure I've informed the public before, that I had a report run on unlocked car burglaries in the town of Darien by street name A to Z, and I believe there is not a street that's in Darien that has not been affected by an unlocked car burglary. So it is every street from Allen O'Neil to whatever Z Street might be. It's every street. We do have pretty good effectiveness in identifying perpetrators after the fact, but I would much rather not have to do that, simply by locking your cars. The state attorney takes the tack now, these are so prevalent across the state, that depending on where any evidence is found on the car, either DNA or fingerprint, they will not sign warrants for DNA or fingerprint evidence that they're, that are on the outside of a car when it is recovered, simply because, you know, the defense could be that you happened to walk by that car and put your fingerprint on that car when it was recovered in Berlin, or Newington, or New Haven, or Bridgeport, you know. I think we're doing pretty well after the fact, but I would certainly much rather have people continue locking their cars.
Are these cars just going on joyrides, or is there like a, where they're being recovered?
They're being recovered typically in urban areas, they're being used for joyriding and transportation for one, they're being, they're certainly being used for criminal activity in these other towns before they're built, they are. I've told the selectmen before, and I've told the story before, that we stopped a car here at Darien several years ago, in the middle of the night, and they were here prowling for cars, and could not conclusively connect them to any stolen cars that night. Recovered in the car, you know, was a handgun. We've had cars stolen from Darien that have been conclusively linked to homicides in other urban cities in Darien, they're being used in criminal activity, and we do not want that to continue, and most of this would happen, would not happen, by locking your cars. cars. And this is a side note, the two, the two people that were in that car that night two years ago are both deceased, male and a female. They are now dead. These are not good people that are coming here stealing our cars. I've been very plain in that for several years now. These are not the folks we want prowling our Darien streets at night. And it can be effectively negated by locking the cars.
So if a resident's car is in the midst of being stolen, would you recommend they chase them out, just?
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Do not?
Call the police and let us try to apprehend them. Who knows now that the state statute does not allow us to chase property crimes, which stolen cars are. We will make an effort to stop them. But when it gets to the point that it is a high-speed chase, we are now enjoined by statute to cut that chase off, because the property crime does not outweigh the danger to the public. Well, Milford had another one the other day where someone went outside. Several months ago, the guy got grievously injured, 400 stitches in his face confronting a criminal in his driveway. So we don't want that.
So don't go out here in driveway?
I would not. No. Call please, call 911 and let us, let us handle it.
Lock your car, it won't be a problem. Lock your car.
Lock your car.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Ed, Public Works.
Good morning. Ed Gentile, Public Works Director. The report is pretty comprehensive and includes all of the work that we're doing right now and some that we'll be doing in the future. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
We thank you for all of that. Look forward to that intersection at West and the road.
Me too. I'd like to get it started too. That would be even better.
Now, we've been talking about it for a couple of years.
Sure.
Lots of paving is going to be happening in the next couple of months. I've had lots of residents ask me about, you know, all the gas lines that went in a year ago and when they're gonna, they're resurfaced.
Fantastic question.
Okay. What's the holdup?
Well, the prices for asphalt.
Okay.
So, as you know, I put my budget in a year in advance, based on prices and some projections. Right now, with the quote that we had gotten back last week before I went away, I'm gonna end up losing of the six and a half miles, I'm gonna lose a mile and a half of roadway because of the pricing.
Wow.
So the discussion I've had with my supervisors, and I've had with Kate in the first selectmen is, do I wait until maybe April, when the prices are definitely gonna come back down? Again, I can't see them going much higher. Oil is, has already started to drop. Liquid asphalt's already started to drop again. So our bids, you know, we bid it at the highest point, but there is escalation and de-escalation adjustments that you can make based on the oil prices. I'd like to bid it again in January and use that price next year, pave in maybe April during school break.
Yep.
And then in July, August, for next year's budget. That's what I'm looking at. I also understand there's a perception that roads need to be done. Neighbors have been waiting a while. There are trenches out there that aren't in the greatest shape, but they're not really bad yet. So that's what we're talking about this week, to make a decision where, if any, we do some paving this year, at this time, before September.
Do you think those roads can withstand another year of ice and snow and plowing?
Our roads are in better shape than most towns around this area. There are some areas that need some, some little TLC, if you will. It's not the entire road. It's at an intersection, or a low spot, or someplace that the road has had defects in the past. So we can go out and we can patch those, and we can hold off for nine months if we had to. Again, I understand the perception from the neighbors, a lot of them have been waiting for a while to have their roads get up to the top of the list.
Do you have a communication plan for those particular neighbors to explain to them what the nature of the delay is and what the projection is for the future, to communicate that we know this is an ideal, this is why we're not doing it now, and this is when we anticipate being able to do that?
As soon as that decision's made on how we're gonna roll it out, obviously, we're gonna have to get the information out to the roads that are on the list, as well as townwide. And we'll use the, you know, the way we normally get things out. I may even send stuff out directly to these roads and deliver them if we had to. But the internet, we have a newsletter that goes out to, that would be helpful in getting that information to the residents, particularly the ones that are on the list.
Certainly happy to help spread that word, because my neighborhood's getting a lot of that complaints.
Appreciate your offer.
And I suspect that the folks can be a lot more patient when they know exactly what the status is, and why, and what's, and what comes next. I think people can be very understanding in that way. But in the face of no communication and just looking out at their roads every day, I think the temperature raises a little bit.
You would think the understanding would be there. And we would hope so, too. And I'd say our residents here in Darien are, they're smart enough to understand, you know, losing $350,000 to paving because of pricing, and then not taking the opportunity to possibly get some of that back. I wouldn't be doing my job then.
Just a quick question. Just remind me, when is the, we have a contract for the single stream recycling revenue through, 2024 or 25?
2024, July 1st, 2024.
Okay. We got a lot.
A little bit of time. We're in the midst of negotiating it right now. Have another meeting in two weeks.
Thank you.
You're good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Registars?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Susan Gray.
Good morning, Carrie Gately. Not a whole lot to update everyone on, other than the primary coming up. On the Republican side, our ballots had to be reprinted, so that's been done. And we finalized the poll workers we needed. And Susan started training last night, so they're all being trained for the August 8th, August 9th primary. Yeah, so it looks like we're, we were preparing for the referendum, which we, you know, the threshold wasn't met, so that won't be going forward. But we had been preparing for that, the logistics with everyone else. And then I think it's pretty much the highlights for now. Susan?
So, yeah, we're just moving along. We've got the election in two weeks. We're printing the official checklist today. I'm training all the poll workers this week. It was hard getting poll workers this time. It was a little more difficult than in other years. I think a lot of people are away. But the people I trained actually in this room last night were really great.
Oh, great.
And they're, so there's new people coming into the pool. Some of them are aging out. I've been here for five and a half years, and I've seen so many poll workers, you know, move out of state. And, but there was a good crew, and some people were interested in moving into more difficult positions, like assistant registrars or moderators. So we'll see if that pans out. But getting the foot in the door, getting them trained, getting them working in the elections is really good, because we have to have that pool to continue. We had reached out to the Secretary of State's office, because we were not filling our positions as easily as we did in the past. And that's a really big concern, because I know it doesn't seem like a big deal, but you can't have the election unless you have your qualified, trained poll workers. So I'm a little more relaxed now.
Are there, oh, sorry. Are there poll workers that aren't returning, and do they give you any idea of, you know, why?
We lost a lot of people to COVID.
It seems like people do it for generations.
So, so it's, so our poll worker force is sort of a little bit older. We have a lot of young people coming in now, but traditionally, it's been people who are retired, and they have the time, you know, they're not working that day. They were very worried about COVID. I will be honest with you. The last several election cycles have been very tough, because I still have people calling me and saying, the surge is, there's a surge, and I don't feel comfortable coming to work at the polls. We have a couple who works, who's been in town forever, and his wife, he's a great checker, and his wife is a great AR or moderator, but she doesn't feel comfortable right now. So we have lost a number of people, and it does take a while for people to do this job before they feel comfortable. We had some issues in the past with people not knowing what they were doing, and the police were called two elections ago. It's happened in other towns as well. I got an email from somebody up in Deer or something.
Deer River.
Deep River. They needed, they were reaching out to, I don't even know where that is. They were reaching out to us to see if we could help them with, with poll workers, so.
So poll workers don't have to be from Darien. You don't have to be from your.
So there are two positions, the tabulator tender and the moderator, sorry, the assistant registrar, who is us at the poll site. The AR and the tabtender have to be from Darien, but I actually wrote to the Secretary of State this time and said, could we make an exception? And they said yes, because a lot of people statewide are having trouble. So yes, we could have sent them people. We didn't.
Yeah, but I think I also want to give a shout out to Marley and to Beth at the Senior Center. We reached out to them to put the word out within minutes.
Yeah, we did get a lot of people.
We had lots of them come in, which was fantastic. So I think that was really great, sort of internal, asking for resources and asking for, to get the word out, Marley as well. And we have a lot of young kids coming in, who are 18, still in town by, you know, in August, they're still here. So they've wrapped up maybe internships they were doing, or summer trips, or whatever. And they're here because they're not leaving for college for another week or so. So a few of, so, you know, we've got, so we'll have like, I think, both ends of the spectrum in terms of resident ages, which I think is kind of fun.
I'm curious about the redistricting, because this is gonna be the first, first election that we have with these new redistricts. Some of them are crossing over, you've got residents that are gonna be going to different polling stations.
Well, the good thing was, we are, we don't have to change the ballot for this election, because there are no offices on the ballot that are not town-wide. So this was, this was an easy, this would have been an easy one to cut our teeth on, but we didn't have to do it. So we were able to print, it's interesting, because the Republican ballot has federal offices on it. It has one, the US Congress for District, which Jim Heinz now holds that position. But they have federal offices, but the Democrats don't. So when I was training people, I had to make them aware of the different laws that apply to ballots that have federal offices versus non-federal. So that's a little bit tricky. And we have the ballots printed in different colors, and we're giving index cards out from, to the voters from the checker to give to the ballot clerk that match the ballot that the ballot clerk then has to give out. It's a, it's a little, I would rather have separate poll workers for all the tables, for the Democrats and Republicans, but we don't have enough of a, of a poll worker's pool. So.
It's like two different elections taking place in the same poll site.
So we're gonna do the best we can do.
Just for the benefit of those that are watching, can you just maybe say some of the deadlines of the voting for, you know, mailing and such for the primary?
I'll go first.
You got it. Town clerk.
Well, we posted it on our, on the website.
I guess we can talk, we won't, we'll leave absentee ballots to the side, because that's a whole different, very specific set of rules and deadlines, which are slightly different. But in terms of the primary, I think the important deadlines are, if you're already affiliated with a party, you can't switch to another party. That three-month window period has already passed. If you're unaffiliated, not affiliated with any party, which is different than being registered independent, if you're unaffiliated with the party, you still have time to register and change your affiliation and participate in the primary for either party. So you go from unaffiliated to Democrat, or unaffiliated to Republican, and participate in either, right, in one of the primary elections that are going on, on that day.
That has to be done by when? Day of?
Not day of, oh, no.
So you can come in and register.
What person can, you can do it day of?
Registration.
You can register, you can come in in person until noon on Monday, to our office and register to vote.
Monday and Tuesday's election.
But you have to be, you have to be postmarked, if you're doing it by mail, by August 4th. So if it's postmarked by August 4th, but it gets to our office by noon on Monday, you're still, you can still vote in the primary. And you can come in until Monday at noon in person and register to vote. No. Everything, everything stops at noon. So there has to be a way for us to be able to, because we have to do a supplemental list. So our supplement, we have to have time to do the supplemental list. And our, our major official list is getting printed today. That's by statute. And then next Monday, two Mondays from yesterday, August 4th, August 8th, sorry, we'll do a supplemental list. And then we're ready. Because we have to, we're gonna be putting all the As on the books, and we have to have everything. The next two weeks are crazy.
People can go online. Well, that's, you know, Secretary of State's side. There's a voter.org side, I think. They can go on, Secretary of State, they can check their registration, or change their affiliation. DMV, I mean, there's many ways they can do it online, if they're not comfortable coming in, or if they're nervous. I know, we've gotten some calls about post office, and if we're still sorting, and if it'll get there on time, but like Susan said, if it's postmarked by a certain time, they'll be okay. But there's many ways people can check their affiliation online or register online.
One question about your report in the sixth bullet point, and you mentioned that you continue to address online registration, et cetera, voter registration inquiries and discrepancies. What do you mean by discrepancies?
There's been, I guess, a few instances when people are renewing their driver's license. And so through the state and federal bills that allow you to register to vote when you are doing anything at DMV with your driver's license, they are asked, do you want to register? And if they're already registered, they'll often say, well, no. Or they'll say, yes, I am, or yes. And by saying yes, and then not wanting to tell the person at DMV their party affiliation, that affiliation then comes off, and they're registered to vote. And so then we get it as if they're like newly registered to our town. Because DMV doesn't know that they're just renewing.
Right.
Right? They could be coming from out of state, and it's a new person registered to our town. And so, yeah, there are two people who've lived here a very, very long time, and they are affiliated. I won't obviously say who they are, but their registrations, and it was, it was in the window, where they had missed the three-month window. So they would have not been able to participate in the primary, and they are people who voted.
Because the names came through from DMV.
Because, and they didn't say to DMV, and so they came as a new voter and didn't signify their party affiliation. It was, it was, we were able to administratively fix it, because they had already been affiliated. And so, you know, without wanting to disenfranchise or like not, you know, I mean, there were different ways we could have worked around it, but it worked out. But so those kind of little discrepancies, or people notice themselves when at DMV, they're like, I, I am affiliated. So, but they're, they're easy to fix.
There are also, there are, the law is very strange about what a bona fide residence is. And so it keeps shifting, and the interpretation of it keeps shifting. So people move out of town, but if they have an intent to come back and they still own property here, you know, do you let them vote? Are they, are they still, they're still registered here, but they're not living here? So that's what we mean by discrepancies. We, we had to deal with it in the presidential election. We got, I don't know how many phone calls a day. My husband is in Washington, posted. We still have our house in Darien. We rent it out. We haven't registered to vote in Washington. We want to vote in the presidential election. Where should we register to vote? So we're constantly doing research, calling Secretary of State's office. I'm not sure that every bit of advice we gave out was completely okay, but we try in every instance not to turn a voter's right, or turn a voter away, or their chance to vote, to jeopardize that in any way. So we always err on the side of caution of the voter. You know, kids who move away after they've graduated from college, they live in Boston, they live in New York, they live all over, they're still registered here. Are, if they have an intent to come back here, if they're in Boston maybe for a year, they try to earn out a job, but they have an intent to come back here, and their parents still live here, and they still get mail at that house, they can vote here. So it's, it's a little, that's what we're talking about. We're trying to work with it, you know, almost on a daily basis, trying to figure it out. So, sorry, we've taken up a lot of time.
I know.
But we do, but we do have an election coming up.
Beth, senior programs?
I talk fast. That is Beth Paris, Director of the Senior Center. I noticed that the next quarter, I didn't do July through September, and I did September through, I mean, October through December, because I think I'm looking forward to that time of year more than the summer. But we did very well in July with our, our. But we did very well in July with our National Ice Cream Month, actually celebrating that the entire month. We have a big program on Thursday. People are coming back into the center. But at the same time, juxtaposition, there's also a lot of Omicron, a lot of people being exposed and not coming in or not feeling well and not coming in being positive. So I'm hoping by the time we get to October, December, somehow or other, that's behind us. There, the, our numbers are going up. We have more individuals coming in. Our lunch is also increasing. So I will take any questions you might have.
Thank you for all your due senior's work.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Kathy Larkins?
Good morning. Kathy Larkins, tax collector. So just the highlights from my report are we ended the year with a collection rate of 99.79%. As I mentioned in my report, there are certain collections, certain taxes on barred from collecting, such as counter and litigation and elderly deferrals. If that was not the case, my collection rate would have been 99.84. As you can see, it's the highest collection rate we've had in the last few years. I also only had to file liens on 30 properties, which also is the lowest in like the last five years. I ended the year with a favorable variance on the prior year tax collections, interest and supplemental motor vehicle. I was under on the prorate bills, but that's a, it's a tough number to come up with because we're trying to guess on when COs are going to be issued. And Tony and I usually have conversations about it, but, you know, it's a difficult number to anticipate. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Thanks, word.
The bills went out in July and things are just moving along, so no issues there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Krista? Pardon? I have Town Clerk then TV.
Oh, got it, got it. Sorry.
I'm by the listing.
No, I'm just going to report.
Hi, Krista McNamara, your Town Clerk. In addition to what I've highlighted in my report, yes, the absentee ballot process with the primary coming up on August 9th, we are very busy with absentee ballots. Absentee ballots became available mid-July. And if you are absent from Town Hall, your voting locations, if you're out of town, if sickness prevents you from voting in person, if you were in the military, if you were, a physical disability prevents you from being at the polls, religious tenants prevent you from being at the polls, you may vote by absentee ballot. It can be done all online or we can help you in the Town Clerk's office. So either way. So that's moving along fine. The process is going great. Dog licenses also is a busy time for us now. We are now about a month ahead of schedule from last year, which is fabulous. The work with the Police Department has been going great with Chip, our Animal Control Officer. We've changed the process a little bit, which I think is helping with compliance. And even yesterday, I had emailed Kate, the Finance Monica, that there is a provision in state statute where we can retain more of the proceeds, which I don't believe we've ever done. So we're going to see if we can look into this. We can retain another 10%. Currently, we are obligated by statute to send 50% of our revenue to the state every September. We can keep 60%. So something we're going to look into, if not for this year, for next. And as far, land records continue to be recorded. And I guess the biggest news is the credit card payments will be coming to the Town Clerk's office.
So January, February, something like that?
Soon as we find that window where we get everybody trained and comfortable with the process. So maybe between the primary and the election, I'm hoping. That's my idea. I'm happy to answer any questions.
How often do you guys collect the ballots on the ballot box? Is it daily?
Every day. That's by statute. So sometimes we do it twice a day. But the ballot box is open 24/7. And we'll stay there until 8:00 PM on Election Day.
Don't see the treasure? Okay. So TV 79.
Good morning. Jim Cameron, TV 79 Program Director. Nobody has mentioned it. I'm really surprised in all the reports we've had. The big news last quarter was obviously Great Island. And there were so many town departments. It's, I'm undoubtedly in their reports, but I got to give everybody credit. I, I think everybody in town government, all the boards, the commissions, the RTM, this board, Boards of Finance, et cetera, did extraordinary work over a short period of time to do the diligence necessary to make a decision. And as I highlight in my report, TV 79 did its part. We carried 18 different meetings totaling 20 hours of all the boards, the public hearings, the caucuses of RTM districts, all the information that was available out there. And our viewership went through the roof, which says to me that we helped play an important role in educating people so they could make an informed decision. And our staff, many of whom I credited at the RTM meeting by name, they're the ones that were there doing all the work. So kudos to them. I just organize things and hobble around at my cane at this point. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
So you feel like you, and congratulations, because that was wonderful coverage. And I should point out, it's such a valuable service to our residents and also people who are volunteering because there are meetings that, you know, we would like to see here on this board, but can't go to P and Z tonight, we can watch it. Or Board of Education matters, you can watch it almost any time. So it's an enormous benefit to the town and the people who work. So in terms of capacity, you have what you need. I mean, obviously, you know, you didn't know that you were going to need 20 more hours of coverage until right about the time that it started to happen. So you feel like you have good capacity.
We have the staffing. The rooms were obviously, everybody was booked up. There were meetings in every available space. You know, it's really the staffing. I'm, I'm really happy. We've got some excellent students from Norwalk Community College, from the video program there who rose to the occasion. As soon as, I guess it was June 6th, the first Board of Selectment meeting, you know, I just warned everybody, I don't know what your plans are, but put them on hold for the next three weeks. Trust me, you're going to be grateful because when it comes to August, it gets really quiet around here. But right now, we need your help. And everybody rose to the occasion. So we have the capacity, you know, both going live and putting it on Vimeo. And I think that the Vimeo replay is extraordinarily important. And that's where we get the best statistics. I don't know how many people are watching this meeting live as it's streaming or on TV right now. But I'll know in a couple of days how many people go back and look at it because they heard there was something really interesting in Jeremy's report or the Police Department, et cetera. I mean, that's the benefit of the on-demand replay. And people use it. They know it's there. The program guide viewership went up considerably as well, too. People are clicking through on their links. You know, it's, if I can offer a personal comment, it is so sad that this town does not have the robust newspapers it used to covering issues like that. I thought that the local coverage in the Darien Times of Great Island was sad, you know. But I'm glad that there were people who dug deeper into the whole process and watched the discussions, watched the votes, understood people's motivations. And I think that the fact that the attempt at a referendum, again, offering a personal opinion, the fact that the attempt at a referendum only Gary gathered less than 200 signatures, says to me, people understood the process and they were happy with the result. Maybe not pleased with, you know, what's going to happen to their taxes, et cetera. But they understood the town government in a very transparent way, made an important decision in including all the questions and the criticism. So that's why I was doing this whole, that's what democracy looks like speech at the RTM. I was really, really proud of the whole process. And, and if TV 79 was able to help, you know, mazel tov.
On behalf of the Hinley Homes Royal Building Committee, we appreciate your flexibility in offering folks that can come and follow our walking tours.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Now, that's another good example. I mean, HHR, Hinley Homes Royal School did a walking tour on the hottest day of the year last, last week.
It was.
And we were able to tag along and, and, you know, that's up there on the Vimeo website. People are looking at it. They, I mean, I've been teasing it as get your first look inside the new Ox Ridge School. That's where they started off. And people are taking the bait and then, you know, watching the rest of the tour as well, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? No, great. Carry on.
Alicia, Youth Services.
Good morning. My name is Alicia and I'm the Youth Director for the Darien Youth Commission. I do have a few things that I'd like to add. I'll keep it brief. First, I'd like to publicly thank a few folks that are in this room and some that aren't. Ally Ramstack, Human Services, for her support of the scholarship process. The Finance Department, Kamisha in payroll, and Jen, the Department Head, for supporting some challenges that I presented. Park and Rec staff, particularly my colleague Jim Coghlan, and Karen Dunn in Human Resources. She does an amazing job onboarding from an administrative perspective the summer camp staff. Which leads me to the next point that I'd like to add, which is the challenges that all of us face in this, in the hiring process. For the first time ever, I had the higher staff that requested time off. It's a six-week summer camp program and I never allow it. Were I not to allow it this year, I would not have been fully staffed. And I wasn't when the program started. I subsequently hired two floaters, which was genius on my part, if I might say, which has been great. I received an email from my colleague over at the YMCA saying that they are desperate for staff and looking to see if any of my staff will transfer to her once my program ends. They are sorely understaffed. I don't know how you run a summer camp program being understaffed, but I know that they are doing a remarkable job as well. And then finally, HHR, the three schools that are being used for summer camp. Hinley for the YMCA, Royal and Homes for the Youth Commission. They are all going to be offline, I believe, next summer, leaving us with Tokneek and Ox Ridge as the two elementary schools that are most appealing and viable. I'm not certain that Kip Kunz or anybody will welcome camp at Ox Ridge. Actually, I don't think that in 2023 it's going to be. So that's a challenge. So we got to rush Great Island. That's my plug. No pressure. It's all on you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
You know, you do such wonderful work and programs. Does the Commission ever consider doing events with youth from other towns? Whether it's like a volunteer activity to help, you know, others, but a blending event with other neighboring towns in our community, even, even, you know, farther. I know I had the experience when my kids were here and they played, you know, football and Coach Trafon would have a game against Bridgeport and then pizza with everybody. They would practice together and they may have even done some joint volunteer things within that athletic community. Does the Commission ever consider those kind of opportunities?
Consistent with the employment challenges, volunteer challenges continue to prevail. And Youth Commission relies so heavily on volunteers. The events that we sponsor are not exclusive to Darien, with the exception of the TOPPS program. Summer camp is open to non-residents after a certain date. The community events that we do are open to non-residents. So I guess specifically in answer to your question, no.
Well, the question may be looking for those opportunities instead of waiting for somebody from the other communities that might say, oh, maybe we'll do something with Darien. But maybe someone coming up with an idea for an activity that can be promoted across a couple of communities or singularly to get, you know, some of these, you know, kids to together. And some of the kids that don't have the opportunity to meet and interact with kids from other communities because they're not involved in sports or something.
Right. I know the Depot, the Teen Center or the Youth Center here in Darien partners with communities outside of Darien. But we don't, but that's not to say that we wouldn't or couldn't look into that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are majority of the summer camp employees residents of the town of Darien?
Yes.
Do they have to be?
No. I have non-resident employees.
I was just made to see the TOPPS update that there was some issue with the sixth grade event.
The, I'm sorry?
There were some issues at the sixth grade event.
Oh, it was outrageous. One, one evening pre-COVID, I was driving home after a TOPPS event and I filled my brain with the nonsense of I have been to over 100 middle school dances in my tenure. I think it's probably a Guinness Book of World Records. I shudder. You know, as I said in my report, I think coming out of COVID, it explains some of it, but it excuses none of it. It was outrageous. And an email went to the sixth grade, through our database, to the sixth grade parents. And then I subsequently emailed to the seventh and eighth grade parents, something that was a slight modification, reminding parents that they have to speak with their kids about behavioral expectations, regardless of COVID. If they would not accept the behaviors at their own homes that took place at this event, then why is it okay for them to do it there? Tearing down declarations, food fights, running away from chaperones, blatant disrespect. It was, it was appalling. Appalling. But the seventh and eighth grade dances were much better, except for, as I said in my report, moving the eighth grade dance to June 10th was, oof. Not only was it hot, but it was smelly. As only you can imagine and as only I can attest. Any other questions?
Thank you, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Want to move right in or you want to just take a minute?
Unfortunately, Monica can't be with us this morning, so I am going to go ahead and give the First Selectment's report for July 26, 2022. The weekly COVID positivity rate as of July 19th was 15.32%, which was a drop from the 19.11% the week before, but still higher than the 9.09% two weeks ago. So there is a little bit of an uptick. A Great Island update. The town continues to do its due diligence work on the 60-plus acres of land that we have contracted to purchase. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing today at 7:30 PM to review the final draft of the Darien Affordable Housing Plan dated back June 2022. The plan has been filed in the Town, Darien Town Clerk's office and is available for review in the Darien Planning and Zoning Department at 2 Renshaw Road during regular office hours at 8:00 AM to 5:15 PM, Monday through Thursday. It's also available on the town website. Comments may be submitted in writing to darienpzc@darienct.gov and/or at the public hearing. I'd like to welcome our new Director of Human Services.
Resources.
Oh, Human Resources, thank you. Susan Barksdale. Susan has spent the last 11 years working for the Town of Stratford's Human Resources Department and most recently as the Assistant Director. We are very excited to have her and working for us here in Darien. Tomorrow, July 27th, there is a Greet and Support Local Group offered by the Town of Darien in collaboration with the Newport Healthcare. The session for local parents and families is from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, either live or via Zoom. Registration is not required and there is no charge. For more information, please see the homepage of the town website. This Friday, July 29th, is the annual Boat Camp for the Person-to-Person Kids at Narotnia Club. This Friday, July 29th, is the annual Boat Camp for the Person-to-Person Kids at Naroten Yacht Club. The event expects to go back to pre-COVID attendance with about 100 children and 20 boats. The town and Person-to-Person and other organizations assist at the squadron in putting this fun event on. As of July 15th, all eight counties in Connecticut are experiencing a stage-two drought condition. All residents are encouraged to voluntarily undertake Water Conservation Act in the second of five stages, including reducing outdoor irrigation and postponing the planting of new lawn and vegetation. The state has experienced this level of drought five times in the last 20 years through the combination of high temperatures and short rainfall. This has led to reduced groundwater levels, soil moisture and low stream levels. We are monitoring this closely and any changes in stage declaration will be posted at the town website. Kate?
Just briefly, in your packets, you got the update on the ARPA funds, where we stand with those, and a summary of our, I'm calling it mid-COVID action report. I don't want to say post-COVID, because I don't feel like we're really there yet.
We're in the trenches.
Yeah, yeah. So we're still there, but already there have been a lot, a lot of lessons to be learned.
Kate, may I ask, could you please post, if possible, the ARPA funds update? Because I think people would be interested to see some of that. I think our residents might be interested. I think there's so many different projects and it'd be great.
Sure.
And in your COVID report, you talked about, you know, policy review and update. Is that something then that you do internally within your office? Or how does that actually work?
It would depend on which policies. Some would be just internal. Some might require the blessing of the Board of Selectmen or some other board. So it would depend on the policy.
Good, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay. Board Liaison Reports.
Well, the Blood Review Board met last Wednesday and we have 10 properties on the list. One that I think will be coming off because of some anticipated action. Of the eight, seven are subject to lien, which means the town actually has liens for the fine funds, which at any time, if those properties were transferred, then those liens would be a bar to giving clean titles. So those will ultimately have to be addressed. The board finds that we are trying to encourage the people who are subject to these violations to, to deal with them without, you know, exposing them necessarily publicly. All of these records are foible, but when we have our meetings, we refer to them by case numbers and not by address. And we talked about that and whether that's the most, you know, effective way. And the feeling was that people with historical knowledge of the committee, understanding that when the legislation was passed, there was great concern expressed on the RTM about seniors and people who have limited means and people who are in trouble. And the idea is not to make a situation worse, but rather try and remedy, remedy the problem. So that is a big motivation, you know, factor. There is one property that we may be talking about, speaking to the Board of Selectmen about a potential foreclosure, but that would be an executive session matter and we're not there yet. But that is something that's bubbling up on our board, as is a discussion of whether or not to expand the ordinance to include commercial properties. That was proposed as an agenda item at our last meeting and will be a full agenda item coming up. And in the interim, I plan to talk to Town Council about some of the legislative possibilities there. And that was it.
The Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee, the next meeting will be a virtual meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd. Our last meeting was, well, I mean, it was a walking tour, which is now on, thanks to TV 79, on Vimeo. And they're in the design process. So it's, things are moving. Anticipated start date of next summer, which obviously will affect. It's one of my campaigns and everything. So, yeah, things are going well. Thank you. Ox Ridge Building Committee, we met last week. Things are going well. We were supposed to have a teardown date of the beginning of July, however, because of some supply chain issues and some fire marshal issues. They held that off. So that was supposed to be happening sometime in the last week of July. So we'll get another update to see how that's happened, what's happening with that. That was the, you know, the second build, the original building. As of the new building, teachers have started to move their stuff in. It is at almost 98% complete of the new building. They have got AV stuff going in and it will be ready for moving in.
Exciting.
You know, first week of, our last week of August, when the teachers need to get their rooms set up. It looks beautiful. They did a little videographer of the new, the new classrooms. And the paint is going on the walls and it's bright and cheery and gorgeous. So excited to get a tour. There will be a ribbon cutting date that will be set for the end of August. I know that we were going through approval. As soon as that comes out, we'll let, we'll let the public know. That's it, I guess. Any public comments?
We had received one email. I don't know if it was intended to be for public comments, but I believe you all got it from a resident. Hoping that we will put more docs in at Great Island should we complete the sale, so. No? Do you guys? I don't think, maybe it doesn't automatically forward to you. You will, I'll have that sent off to you.
That'd be great. Thanks.
And we had one appointment that we were supposed to do today. However, we can't do that under our statute without Monica here. So we will table that one. And we move on to reviewing of minutes from our July 11th meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, additions to the minutes at the July 11th regular meeting? May I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented? Mike first, Sarah seconds.
Don't get your hand tied.
All in favor? Are there any topics Board members would like to see on future agendas?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Sarah first. Mike second. All in favor?